Okay, I'll call to order Finance Committee, December 12th. Two to six P M. So it show all members are present. Approval of meeting minutes from the previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, November twenty first, twenty twenty-three. We have some, a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second? Unfinished business, vehicle purchase funding.
All in.
Oh, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I always forget all in favor.
Yes.
Because I know we. Okay, unfinished business, the vehicle purchase funding.
All right, this. I have got somewhere I can. So the last of the, this concerns the last of the three trucks that were ordered. Two of them have come in now, and they were fifty-eight thousand and fifty-seven thousand change. And we also have one more waiting on with no definite delivery date. They're still looking on hydraulics, but that comes out to be approximately rounded up two hundred and two thousand dollars. So that's the remaining outstanding vehicles of all our orders at this point, and that's what we need to discuss tonight, so.
I do have a proposal for you. If you look on that one sheet, Capital Project one oh two, the last page in the back of Capital Project one oh two, we have eighty-seven thousand dollars right now available. I say that we could use sixty thousand of that money toward the trucks, and that would leave us the, the law at one forty-two for the council to finance from the general fund.
So, Lens, I was reading the fleet management, and I, I had seen kind of where, in terms of the two thousand and two left for the three trucks. And you had indicated at that point, forty, that the council had noted forty-seven thousand out of Capital Fund one oh two, but you're saying sixty thousand out of what you did say?
Um, right now, up to date, the capital budget has eighty-seven thousand dollars in there right now. After I spoke to the fire chief, um, he will need maybe ten to fifteen thousand to buy more equipment for the fire trucks. And I say that we could use sixty thousand of that money toward the trucks, which could leave us with one hundred and forty-two thousand for the, for the council finance.
Questions about that? So I'm guessing you have some thoughts on, on recommendations for that one hundred and forty-two thousand?
Um, we have two ways we could do that. Um, we could take some money out of the contingency. Um, if you look on the second sheet that I give you, um, the top one is your fund balance for the general fund. We have three point seven million dollars right now, um, in there for the general fund, and also in the contingency account, we have ninety-seven thousand dollars in there. I don't, I don't know if we want to split that between the two funds, or we want to take everything out of the fund balance, which we could do as well. Um, the only thing is, the fund balance may go down eventually, because I do not have the final numbers yet in B W P for adjustments.
That was my next question, was the confidence in that number. Thoughts, recommendations for?
Got a question. Um, the three vehicles that are, so that one's for streets, two's for parks, so they are pretty much all related to the general fund, right? So these are, there's no water usage or sewer fund usage for these?
No.
All right. Um, and then these are the last of the three commitments of the vehicles, is that right?
Yes.
I mean, it's six of one, half dozen, whether you'd, you'd take some of it out of contingency at this point, um, being halfway through the year, and we've only used about three thousand dollars out of it. Do we have anything earmarked for contingency for general fund right now that, that we can think of, Mr. Mayor?
I don't believe so.
You know, so.
So.
It's really up to, up to the feeling of the council. I would be fine taking half, taking down half of that and then financing the rest of the general fund.
Was that, Lens, out of that eighty-seven, was that sixty-nine hundred payment included in that, that was noted in the fleet minute? Because how does that, to, you're asked that question, signing, there was a balance of twenty-seven thousand dollars that had left, ten thousand was earmarked, Bill had mentioned, for rust, toward the, ten thousand for the fire truck, which would have left seven thousand, but it was noted, there was a sixty-nine hundred dollar payment for November, and then there was actually still a couple more vehicles at auction, correct?
That are going to auction.
That are going?
Yeah.
Fine. And the proceeds of that would come back to that.
Back into one oh two.
It will come back to the capital project one oh two, once we can get the money back.
So the original question, I'm sorry, Lens, I was asking, was that sixty-nine hundred dollars, was that included in the eighty-seven thousand, that November payment that was noted during the fleet minutes?
This one was, I don't have it on my question.
Is the last part of the fleet minutes? In the fleet minutes, uh, there was a sixty-nine hundred dollar put in the fund from revenue in November, been talking about.
No, I don't have it on my question. I, I, uh, it's not included into eighty-seven thousand dollars, no. If it's not on my sheet, it's not included.
Okay. It's gonna say, you could leave some left in one oh two, or you could take more out of one oh two.
I mean, chances are, we haven't got any on check yet, so once I do get it, it's gonna go in here.
So you're saying there, there's more like ninety-four thousand theoretically in there?
Theoretically, plus an additional five vehicles that will go at auction in the future.
It's just for conversation, say, the vehicles that are going to auction, probably, who, who would have an idea, Mayor, about the, the value of those vehicles? Probably immaterial, right?
Um, we talked about that, and it's, uh, in the area of, uh, maybe twenty, yeah, twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Just to reply.
It should just be a guess at last, though.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, that's just a very rough guess, or timing is an issue, uh, yeah.
And I don't, I don't think it's a, and I don't think it's a problem to start, I mean, if we deplete, right, to start building back up for, and I think I brought it up a couple meetings ago, hopefully in the budget, we can hear a plan about building up that vehicle replacement fund, um, because, you know, we bought a slew of vehicles this year, and it's probably gonna need to happen every other year or whatever, uh, we need to know how we're gonna pay for those, so.
And I would concur with that. I think that one of the things we want to do going forward is, is to be more planful in our approach, so that we have, we've, we've talked about having kind of a, an assessment of vehicles that are gonna be coming up that need to be replaced, so that we can be planful and have that into the budget, kind of as we go forward, um, versus kind of finding the money, um, after the fact. So I think we still do need that comprehensive list of vehicles and kind of a, a plan for turnover that we talked about. I think that would be helpful as we, as we look to budgeting and stuff in this coming year.
Is that something that we have, Mayor, that you could, you could share with the council, or is that a list?
Yeah, that's being upgraded now.
Okay.
As soon as we, uh, as soon as it's upgraded, yeah, we can provide that list.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
So is, yeah, am I hearing your recommendation is to take more out of what's projected to be about ninety-four thousand?
Don't have to, I mean, we allow, I just replied, it should just do as, Lens just proposed, and on paper too, because in the honest, it doesn't matter. Change, it takes a lot of contingency, make them rewrite it, or else just do the same and then use the other later.
And John, you propose fifty-fifty kind of split?
As long as, I mean, as long as the mayor doesn't, I mean, because typically, the way we do is, um, at least in, in the years past, is we get to the end of the year, and we always watch the contingency, we spend it down one way or another, on most urgent needs and critical needs. If, if we're halfway through the year, if nothing comes to the, the mind of the mayor, um, well, this is just as good as any, it's all from the same bucket, um, so that would be my recommendation.
Fine.
Does that work with you, Mayor?
Yeah, so we said, let's see, we're saying, taking fifty, fifty thousand out of general fund contingency, and the rest out of fund balance.
Correct.
I think we can live with that.
Fifty, fifty-fifty split, fifty?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, and the remaining balance, close to, so sixty thousand out of, uh, Vehicle Replacement Fund one oh two, fifty thousand out of, uh, General Fund contingency, and then the remainder out of, uh,
Ninety-two thousand?
Ninety-two and some change.
Yep.
Out of just the general fund. Since you brought up a, a topic, Lens, I'm sorry, it was, it was, um, do we have any idea when our auditors are gonna get us these numbers?
Um, I did email Justin on Monday, um, I think his word was, um, probably the end of this month or next month, maybe he can get to it. I think right now he's pretty busy, with other things going on.
I have, I have a meeting with David Tanna today.
Okay.
I told him it's very critical that we have this as soon as possible.
Yeah.
So, uh, we said, David, schedule a time, the first of the, first of the year, and we'll get it with this done, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Just leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor. Because we, yeah, we, we need to know, you know, I mean, I, when you, when you come from a, a corporate environment, you need to know where you're, where you are at, at all times, and, um, you know, we rely on our auditors, our audit company to, to provide some services to us, and, and it's, uh, it seems like every year, it gets later and later, and, um, it makes it very difficult for us to do our business that we need to do, so, um, we may need to have a strategic conversation about that in the, in the coming months.
And I was going to ask, as we go and move forward, and we're looking for the new year and stuff, I mean, is there something that we can put in, in terms of expectations, um, in terms of closing out the year? I mean, I think that it, you know, it is unacceptable, unlike the time we've gone without fully closing out our year. Anything else on the vehicle purchase fund? Okay, new referrals for consideration, the southern, South Union Street project construction inspection funding.
Where are those three?
This is, do you want to sit, do you want to just join us here, Robert? We can do that.
Yes.
Sure, I have it all with me, though.
He's got the next three things.
Give me some space.
I think we have all, I'm not a transstate, man.
Just flip it now.
Okay. First here, we, we had, um, South Union Street project construction inspection funding. So, South Union Street's going to start in the spring of this year, coming year, twenty-four. It is a three-point, well, three million dollar project, and we're now at the point we're going to go out to bid for it, and we have to plan on inspection services. This, um, is an issue that goes back to, uh, last year's budget, we brought up the need for construction inspection. We have a, uh, proposal to change order, but it's a draft proposal from the engineer who designed this for construction services. It's a little on the high side, I'll talk about that in a second, but it's still a pretty big number. We also, uh, tying with this, East Day Street's same timeframe, that's going out to bid probably in January, and that'll be constructed this, um, next season also, and I have some rough numbers for there, so let me, uh,
What's the dollar value on East Day Street's dollar?
The projects?
Yeah.
One point eight two, maybe.
Call it two.
I think it's one point eight two. One million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. I don't know how accurate that seventy-two cents is. So, South Union Street came in from our consultant, who designed it, C P L, at four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars for construction inspection services, and this is, matches what we had briefed back in last budget season.
What was that number again, under four?
Four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. That is for a number of items and tasks here, but essentially, it's a resident engineer and construction inspector that has two staff individuals on site there for the project. Speaking with Lovella on East State Street, his rough estimate is approximately twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a month per person, and it's an eight-month project, so he's looking at anywhere from two hundred or two hundred and forty thousand, substantially lower than the other one. I suspect the answer lies somewhere in the middle on these. C P L did indicate that they came in high with their numbers, because they, this, this is pretty much their max, they build up.
Not to exceed.
Doesn't say that, but that's definitely what it is. They kind of matched out on their numbers here, ours, so they don't, they like to come in a little higher, so you know upfront what it is. But you're looking at here, you know, let's say, average hour, you're looking at an anywhere three hundred thousand piece here, so you're looking for these two, could be about six hundred thousand dollars. We had been, right, right now, we have two engineers in the department there, we don't have the staff to manage these, and that's what went back to, um, in, I believe it was in March, we looked at the numbers here, forecast what was coming down the road, and I believe what we had wanted to do here, which I would propose to you again here, is, that was the pay grade sixteen civil engineer position, and that ended up being fifty-nine five without benefits, and that is, um, split across the three funds, actually, it's water, sewer, and general fund. I think, believe it came out, give me a second here, approximately eighty, eighty-two thousand per ass with benefits. Eighty-two, two eighty-two. So we're looking at, I think we forecast back then, in the next five years, one and a half million dollars of construction services based on those rates. Again, I think it's a little high, but let's say you give it a million, um, we're looking at eighty thousand, eighty-two thousand, you know, you're looking at eighty-two thousand per year over five years is four hundred thousand dollars, this engineering position will cost us, versus a million to a million-five. So it's clear, it's anywhere from two and a half, three times, um, more to contract it out. That would also assist, I remember talking about the, the workload with the CHIPS program and all the other engineering projects. CHIPS program is growing every year, we're getting more and more money, and we're kind of string to deliver that program. So I guess what I want to throw to you tonight, throw out on the table, is we have to make a decision if we're going out to bid in January for East Day Street and South Union will probably follow right behind it. We have no one set up to inspect this at this point, no staff, nor do we have a construction contract, construction inspection contract.
Robert, I, I have a question. So you said that the, uh, C P L was, that, that amount was for two people on site, basically full-time. So you're proposing to have one civil engineer that would be able to do both of those?
No.
Okay.
They base their numbers on two, two people here, they're on site, meaning they're down in, in Olean working, they don't have to be out on that job site every minute of the day, so they got two per project. There's a lot of office work involved. I'm proposing adding another engineer to our staff, so we have the three to cover the two projects. They can cover two projects at the same time, especially when they're completely adjacent to each other.
Then in-house, you would be able to do it?
Yes, in-house.
And they would have the certification and everything to be able to do it?
Well, that's what we look for when we go to hire someone, yes. The one person, no, I'm not advocating we'll do all of them, he would, could be the resident engineer on the one, with assistant on the other one, and, and we could have, we got Dave and Ally assisting also, so.
So I just want to clarify, um, so we, uh, rather than hire two contractors, if we were to employ a full-time position here, they could double up with one of our existing, in other words, under the three, they could cover the inspection services?
I believe we could, yes. I would prefer two more, I know that's not gonna happen, but I think we could do it with the, the three. And we have to keep in mind that one of these employees is also about to have a term early, I believe in, is it February? So that is, uh, I'm not sure when she's back, but she'll get back once we get into construction season, because we're not obviously constructing in February.
Robert, if we do this in-house, um, what kind of liability, I mean, then we take on liability for that inspection, right?
For construction inspection?
Yeah.
We're certifying, yes, that it meets specifications, so.
The concerns, I would, I can't remember, we had some problems with North Union Street, and I can't remember if we did that in, did we do that in-house, John? No, so we used a contractor, and still ended up in that situation.
Yeah, I mean, they're professionals hired to certify it, so.
Yeah.
There's a liability on, on them for doing that, yes. I can't speak to North Union, I don't remember we hire routine at, at that time, I don't know.
How do you feel about our ability, you know, if we did hire on someone, or a couple, however that works out, the ability to, to get the quality we want, you know, from these, the contractors doing the work, rather than letting them just kind of have us follow suit and okay what they do, you know?
No, I'm, I'm confident we can do it. The wild card in the middle of this is the CHIPS program, we're also, we don't know how much more we're gonna get, we're not gonna assume it's gonna go up like it has. Painting this year started in September, that's something we don't want to do again, so we do have that going on at the same time, so we are gonna be bouncing around. When we do the CHIPS program, we can perhaps look at building in some construction inspection of that, see what's eligible there. Maybe not do as many roads, but have the quality, you know, oversight on that, that way, so that's something we're exploring right now. But I am confident they can do it.
John?
So this is something that I did, I did support, I know it was the council's decision to, you know, uh, as, it was a very difficult budget season, uh, to not add any positions, but this was a particular position that I think you can, you can see the value add, or if, if not even the value add, and you can see the payback period on, on something like this. Um, so I mean, if we're going out, and we're gonna have to contract for inspection services in the neighborhood of, neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars for two different projects, um, you know, sixty thousand, we're looking at fringe at eighty-five thousand dollars, you know, even upwards north of ninety-five thousand dollars, that's, that's seven or eight years, uh, of, of work, um, that, that we are getting out of a valued member of the team, um, and, you know, there may be retirements that happen down the road that maybe we, if, if construction slows down, uh, maybe this is our big shot at revitalizing Olean and so on, and maybe for the next ten years it starts to slow down. Well, seven, eight years from now, we'll have paid the exceeding amount we would have paid a contractor to do the job, and if there's a retirement or something in, in a division, or, uh, you know, we can always reevaluate, and we still need three in-house engineers. Would you agree with that, Robert?
I would agree with that. I'll take it a step further, if you have concerns regarding our ability to deliver it, you said it was a, I think you said five to six-year payback, you bring in this engineer, you also, in the short term, hire a, a lower-level technician to give the extra body, maybe your payback's three or four years, and you don't retain that one as long. You're still gonna have a three- to four-year payback before we, you know, we're ahead, and you give, give him one more body, you can guarantee you get that one. I certainly would, would like that, but.
The other thing, I'm sorry, this, this would be our employee, and it would have invested as to interest in being our employee, so.
And they'd be here, you're wrapped, right, like?
Yeah.
So they could work and plug in, uh, gaps in other, in other areas, and, um, as, as they see, as we see fit, and, um, I mean, I, I get it, we don't want to haphazardly necessarily add positions, especially because in turn, it oftentimes means it has to increase tax rates, um, but in this case, we're confronted with, you know, a sizable amount of money, it's not built into the grant money that we've received, um, so, you know, we gotta make the call. I, I do believe it's in the fiscal best interest of the city, um, not, and not to be even mentioned, we've gone down the road, as Jason asked, we went down the road of hiring an outside engineering firm to do the inspection services, and, and we didn't end up in, in that great of a position, um, so I think when you have to do something in-house, it is better, um, so that's my, that's my pitch, uh, but I do support this, this position.
And I think that of all the positions that were kind of pitched, this is the one that we saw the most value in, even though we ultimately didn't fund it, that, you know, we saw that there could be a need for this.
Just add, I think that, and I agree with that, you know, because we were, things were tight, but I think at that point too, we also didn't have the funds, or we didn't have timelines, and we didn't know when projects would start, and I think that was, I think, concern at that point too, but now, we have timelines, and at a certain point.
Other thoughts on adding an engineer position?
Another, for, for, you know, just for logistics, is this something that can be worked in, in the middle of a budget season? How, how would that go about? Because obviously, time is of the essence, if we're gonna start talking about, you know, breaking ground, uh, in the springtime, it doesn't leave, give us a, a big, you know, timeframe here to work with.
Well, by the time we would put something in place by this, we're looking at probably, uh, you know, here it is, it's December, January, February, so maybe March, April, and May, so we'd have to, three months of what we'd have to come up with.
Okay.
You know, uh, for, and then then we build into the, the next budget plan.
Right.
So it sounds like there's support for?
Robert's, Robert's told us he can do it, the numbers make sense, so, I'll see how we can say no to it.
Mayor, what, what do we need to do next?
Well, I think what's next is, we would, uh, look, look at the, uh, the position, uh, probably get, you know, get some advertisement out there.
Do you have to go through civil service and all of us?
Oh, yeah, it would be a civil service position, and, uh, check on, on the, the licensing, and, and try to locate something, and we can always, you know, put the starting date at March first, or in that area there, so, it's gonna take some time to, to, uh, find the right person.
Yeah, the wild card in all this is, who's gonna apply? That's, that's always the unknown.
Everyone is looking to move to Olean New York, obviously.
So we'll keep our, we'll keep hopeful on that.
You're inside, aren't you?
That's right.
That's right.
Look at that.
Optimism.
Is there anything else, though, uh, from a, a technical standpoint or anything that we need to do, Mayor, other than to?
Right now, I think, uh, we'll put some, try to put some better figures together, and know, in, uh, you know, we find a person, we, uh, and we know, say, March first, uh, what our, what we're gonna need, and then we got to come back to the council and And then we got to come back to the council and say, we're, we're advertising this, we're doing this, we've got somebody interested. Here's what we're going to need starting March, you know, three months of, uh, of wages. Come back in and, uh, see what we can, what get, what we need to support that.
We should have our general fund numbers by, by then, we hope.
By when?
Also, March.
Okay. Working on it right now.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then municipal building HVAC assist, or funding?
All right, the reason this is on here is, well, you had three hundred thousand dollars put from the ARPA fund for this. We had a hundred thousand for the senior center and two hundred thousand for here. Back in July, we moved some of the money over. We ended up with a hundred and eighty-eight thousand for the senior center because it came in a bit higher and that left us with a hundred and twelve here. That project, by the way, is almost complete. They ran a little setback this weekend setting the, uh, units, but, um, if all goes well, we'll have all the heat and everything done in that building until Friday. Worst case, we'll own it next week. But for this building, we're left with a hundred and twelve thousand. The consultant involved in this project pretty much stopped and said, I can tell you ballpark, this number is going to be several times more than what you have left. So he didn't do anything else on it until he wanted to know if we are willing to, to go that way. We don't know what it's going to be until he does a study. He didn't want to go ahead and do the study without us authorizing him to continue. Otherwise, we'd just be spending the money, throwing it away, and then we can run a budget for it and then the money's lost. So he really, he's willing to do it, but he wanted assurance from us or he wanted basically an authorization from us. I can't tell you what it's going to be. He was throwing numbers out. He thought it could be upwards of six hundred to finalize this building. We have a hundred and twelve. That's why he hesitated to go any further. If you want, I can engage him to go farther with it and do the study. I'm not sure what it's going to be. I can tell you from his, because he kind of, at this point it's she, this is Rizella, wrapped it up in the, uh, cost. There's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar project over there. They've got fifty-nine thousand that, of soft costs. That includes project management, commissioning, warranty, design markup. So the design's built into that. It's probably about, I'm going to say maybe twenty. So we were looking at twenty thousand worth of design work on the other building. Probably similar here, maybe thirty to a fifty, fifty project. So we're now looking at a tremendous amount. We would not need to take any more money. We would just cut in a little bit further into the one-twelve we have left. Let's say we get that thirty thousand, we look at it and it tells us the number's too high, okay? It's not wasted because now we know what we have to do in future. We have the design, that won't change. Remaining money, we can easily allocate to, um, energy upgrades in this building, window replacements, other things that'll, that can help make the, make it more efficient and reduce our heat loss. If we're not going to be fixing up the system, the deliverers, we can improve its efficiency. So we could find a definite use for that money. Um, it would be gone in no time if we had that marching order to go in that direction. So I would propose we go ahead and do the study, find out, we don't know what we're dealing with here.
Robert, this is just for cooling? Your, your new heating system's in, right?
Not here, no. Well, yes, we have boiler systems down there. Um, we have, there's still a lot of things that need to be upgraded here. Kevin didn't touch the system per se. He just changed the boilers out to make them more efficient. But there's still a lot, as you know, a lot more to it than that. It's, the air conditioning is archaic, it's ancient. We got it going this, last year by replacing a pump out. We got a, uh, a well out on the street, basically, that pulls in the cooling water to, uh, run the system and it goes back to the fifties, probably when this was built. We're limping it along.
Air quality's a concern too?
Well, there is, there is still a heating component to it, but ventilation's a big issue. We have a police locker with marijuana and when they open the locker, all that odor gets sucked into the ventilation system and the entire building smells. That's a constant. We have diesel trucks idling out back. When they drop off, um, materials and supplies, the intake for the building is right by the diesel exhaust. There's a lot of things like that that need to resolve and repick. So there's quite a bit to this one.
With the, uh, project over at the John J. S. Community Building, when they set the new heat, the new units, uh, they discovered that they had to redo, uh, some of the duct work. So that was going to be twelve thousand?
Probably twelve, we're figuring fifteen, worst case. They would have to, I would have to come to you and ask if we could pull it out of that one twelve also. So that would put us at a hundred, yes, roughly. Um, they couldn't tell until they pulled them off. They didn't know what was underneath. And now that they know, we've got some duct work being fabricated out for us.
Have we looked at, uh, any grants for any of the upgrades for, any utility upgrades, stuff like that, uh, for our systems? I know you mentioned, uh, the ventilation system. I know that was a big issue during COVID. And then there was a lot of things that came up where they were offering grants and stuff like that for, you know, because there's buildings like this that are ancient and could use that type of assistance during that government.
We have not. I know during COVID, when I was working on these systems, we couldn't find any grants whatsoever for it because it was too new. You know, COVID had just come out, so I wasn't, everyone was just in panic mode. Once it got more established and settled, they may have come out. I'm not aware of that, though. Uh, we can certainly look into that.
That was, uh, that was the reason that we earmarked, one of the reasons we earmarked the COVID money was for that here. Uh, we have gone through the lighting with National Grid and so we've done all the lighting in the building. That's been upgraded. And we just need to, you know, it's, it's, uh, I know it's still a beautiful building, but it's an old building. And we need to do some, some upgrades here. Make it, uh, you know, air quality is a big issue, so.
And we can continue to look at, look for other options to solve this, absolutely.
And then outside of the air quality, because that's, I mean, that's going to be something that's going to be an issue until it's actually fixed. What, how would you rate the urgency, you know, five to ten, one to ten?
Well, it could die any day.
Right.
So.
So can I, but.
It's a lot easier to fix it before it goes than to do it after the fact.
Yeah.
Urgent? We had a significant problem last year without heat or without air conditioning in this building. It was an issue delivering our services to the public. I mean, it was, it was all, it was, I won't say uninhabitable, but it was un, it couldn't function anywhere. His was the worst, but, uh, I wouldn't put this off too long. I, I would.
John?
Um, so you brought up the idea, and I mean, obviously, the entire building's archaic. So, and I, and I, I didn't like the idea because the direction that everyone's going, uh, about replacing the windows. Um, so because I, I can only, again, in my limited knowledge, you know, if you heat a building, but if the windows suck, right, your heat, so there could be significant efficiencies. I mean, that, that needs to be done too, right? I mean, is these, when, do we have an idea how much a hundred thousand dollars could actually do?
No idea, honestly, yeah. I don't know, you know? I know in the past, they'd put window treatments on there, try to cut down on the heat loss and reduce the solar infiltration so you don't get too hot in summer. Still doesn't address the aluminum frames, which is tremendous heat loss. We need to go, so can a hundred thousand get us far? I don't know at this point.
Well, would be just a step to find out. Could we get an idea? Just talk to someone?
The company they were using here, that's off the state bid program, they do that also. They could certainly, they can do their study of the building, they can include window replacement. They've mentioned it.
Oh, that would be good.
So they could be part of it. Here's what you need to do upgrade this, here's your alternate for that, or it costs more. We could just have a design and say, forget about the heat system and let's look at windows.
I mean, I, I think, could it, could this study incorporate both of those, right? Because they're going to both need to be done.
Absolutely.
And once you evaluate them, you got the study, then you know what you're up against.
Yes, they can do that.
So, I mean, I think I would be more, we know, we just don't know it's a matter of time when these things are going to go, but I, I think it would be beneficial to at least use this money to do a environmental study, if you will, or however you want to call it, on the windows and HVAC system here.
Yes, they can do that, they've offered that up already.
So, John, just for me, for clarification, though, we can or cannot then use the ARPA funds for the assessment component? The third?
Yes, they did that as part of the senior center. That was, first they did their assessment and design and that was paid for out of this.
Okay.
That was part of that fifty-nine. I don't know how much, but like I said, it was part of that cost. I'm guessing it was maybe about twenty.
Robert, on that assessment there for the HVAC, though, that would just be a study of here and now. So if that got kicked down the road, let's say a couple, two, three years, that study could be incomplete.
It could, but we, more than likely, it would be a total replacement system, so whether this one gets worse.
Because if there wasn't going to be for that, then there's really no sense to do it because it's only for the here and now. You might even just say, we don't have the funds. If it's six hundred, then just move to the windows.
I think it's, it would definitely be a total replacement. They can't really, I don't even get parts for a lot of stuff, to be honest with you. So we would not be looking.
And even two, three years down the road, though, cost-wise, that number?
It will go up.
Would be different.
Absolutely.
One of the things that this study will help with is if there is any grants to come along. We already have the study done, know how much we need to reply for.
And a lot of times those grants require a study to be done.
Could the study also perhaps outline things that we could do in-house that our HVAC specialists could do?
It'll be the total package of what needs to be done and we can take that and define which, how much of it we want to do. Absolutely. So it'll say you have X amount of items and if we look and see Kevin has that lower your capacity, we can easily do that.
Any other thoughts? So what do you need from us to move forward to do the assessment component?
Oh, I would need approval from you to do that, so I could give them a call and tell them that we are willing to do that next step, so.
We can put together a resolution for next week. It would outline what we, what we need.
Okay. All right. Warvets Pool Treatment System Upgrades Funding.
Can I just bounce back for a second, please? I just wanted to confirm. So are, is there a consensus that we might as well evaluate the windows as well as the HVAC while we're, if it's one company and state bid that can do this? Does that make sense?
I mean, is it, can we just evaluate the building in general, like? Not just focus on windows, but I mean, insulation, roof?
They'll look at the whole energy package.
Like, they'll tell you where there's opportunities and it makes sense.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll look at the whole package for this one.
Yep.
Warvets Pool.
All right, I guess I'll take that one. So this isn't about the splash pad, this is about the pool. I know we talked here a while back, um, one of the options when we did the splash pad was to upgrade the deck. I know there was some support at the time about we're putting all this money in the splash pad. We had an old-looking pool and that's kind of contrary to what we're trying to do. Well, it's, it's a little bit beyond that at this point. I have here the final inspection for this year for the pool that was done with Cat County Health Department and Chris Churey. And we have a little bit of an issue here with the pool. We found, uh, Department of Health found several violations. And the one, some of these were operational, we can fix them, some, you know, need to clean some stuff, mark off some things. But the one that's got us here is, is, um, this one right here. Filters properly operated, maintained, and the flow meter maintained. We, that section of the code, the finding was that pool filters are not properly maintained. Now, I'll read this to you so you have it. One of the sand filters sprung a catastrophic leak from the bottom of the chamber, which continually discharges pool water to the floor. Operator is using a rain gutter system rigged up to the floor to redirect the water from the leak into the balance tank to prevent the room from flooding. Additionally, the sand filter pressure gauges appear to no longer be functional and they indicate the effluent from one is higher than the effluent which is not possible. That is true, the gauges are bad. The problem here is that leak in the tank. The final, final comment on this is, please note a reinspection of the pool facilities will be required before opening next season. As it is right now, that pool can't open with those filters that way, so they need to be fixed. These are, again, about fifty-year-old filters. They're shot, we can't repair that in the bottom. You can't even get to it, you'd have to pull them out. When you pull them out, we're pretty much gutting that treatment room as it is to get them out. And the sand has never been changed and anyone's living memory over there, so the media is decades old. We talked to CPL who is working on the splash pad and they had originally talked some numbers for us and we got some updates today. What they, and he, he said these are some rough numbers, so don't necessarily hold it to it, but to redo that filtration room, so it is up to code and passes, so we can open it up again for the DOH code, he had an estimate of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. That's construction, engineering, contract administration, inspection. Just to give you an idea of the whole picture, the remaining part for those items for the pool deck is five fifty-six. So basically, a whole new pool deck and room for eight eighteen. The deck isn't the emergency. We can open with the deck and the condition it's in. That filtration room, they won't, that we inspected, they will not let us run it without that upgrade, which is two hundred and sixty-two thousand. So now you're, we are faced with a situation where we won't have a pool next season unless we fix it. We looked at Band-Aids on it and the, their rain gutter was the only, the last ditch effort to collect the water, so we didn't waste water. So. I'm full of good news tonight.
My, uh, my input is, I think the pool's got to go and that's where I'm going to stay. That's where I'm at, as we talked about the splash pad, I think it's where we got to go back to.
I'll be in Robinson's.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you said that. I was going to play it a little diplomatically, but yeah, the, the pool should have went a long time ago. Overdue, not making enough money, costing us more money, too many issues, outdated. I mean, you said everything to coincide with, get rid of the pool. If we're going to spend two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars into just a filtration room, I mean, to me, that's a quarter million dollars that can be spent elsewhere in the city. Yeah, I was curious, though, as far as the Band-Aids, because I'm, I mean, I did water purification in Marine Corps, so I'm thinking of this filtration room. I remember seeing it. I'm thinking of a large tank, so there's something in the bottom of the tank that's allowing the water to filter out and from the filter system.
There is a valve for draining it on the bottom that is rotted out. It sits about that far off the ground there, probably eight-foot diameter tanks. And there's a ringer on the bottom, so to get into changing, you've got a, a gap about this wide where you can get a wrench in and hopefully break that rusted thing off. But if you break it and you can't replace it, we're in trouble because you can't get another one up in there to put it in. So really, without moving the tanks, we can't get to that.
Is it possible to, so this was two forty, two sixty-two is for a complete redo?
It's, it's the pump, it's everything.
One, would this filtration system still be needed for the splash pad?
No, this was a separate unit, they had their own.
And then, so that helps again with elimination. Is it possible to pull the tank, uh, some, just hypothetically, someone come in, unhook this tank, lay it on its side, uh, do the necessary work? If something happened, maybe cut out and weld in a new piece from the tank, you know what I'm saying, the steel?
Right. Well, sort of. Um, you have to pull everything out to get at it, so that, so you would be, pretty much be removing everything. It's full, so you have to pump it out. And I don't think they gave much thought to that when they put it in. There's no way to get it to pump the media out.
Okay.
Probably, right, the pressure vessel too, right?
I think it was before. Before it sprung a leak.
Certified, certified, right?
Yeah, it had certified welder, but to take it out and flip it on the side and do it, we already got it and gutted at that point. So we're either going to replace it all or put back in the junk.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring that out, that way, that's out there, that either way, it's a loss-loss.
Can I just ask, just a quick question for my sake again? We can't just, like, cut the old ones out and chop them all down and haul them away and then just like go get some new ones and assemble them inside? Inside the room, like, I don't know, don't they make a new one? We have to buy giant?
There's no room in there. Well, they, honestly, they may be smaller in this day and age than they were back then. I mean, we have to look at the design. You can maybe get away with some smaller multiple ones, that's possible.
I mean, I'm just at, like, and then maybe Clark Fattig really would have pointed that out, but I'm just thinking, like, if that's the mission critical.
Filters are.
The filters. And then is there no possible solution where, I, I saw the size of them, I know they're in, you know, you can't take them out the way they're, they sit.
I'm not sure they go through the door without.
Right, well, so, can you just break them down in there? I understand you got the crud inside there. Right, well, so, can't you just break them down in there? I understand you got the crud inside there.
Well, you probably could.
And I'm, we're just spitballing here, I'm just, I have no idea, and then go down to.
I mean, it'd be a mess, you'd have to take out a lot of stuff to do it. They are full of media, so you'd have to pump that. It would be a mess, so.
Go down to pool mark.
But we still need to replace them though.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Start to suck the media out.
And whatever we put in there would be subject to approval by the health department, so they wouldn't have to review it all and be happy with that. I mean, they're not gonna care if we take them out, but what goes in, they're definitely not concerned about. Um, if you wanted to go.
But I wouldn't imagine you'd have to put new ones in there that come in giant steel balls anymore today, they gotta be small.
They typically look like that, but they could be smaller size these days. We could have many, maybe you have eight of them instead of two giant ones, I don't know.
Could we at least ask the, the pool person, the, the plumbing person at CPL, if, if that's something like that could be workable?
We could.
I don't know.
We could.
That's just.
I can go back to that.
So, remind me of the, the cost, I think in my head I know that we were looking to replace the deck and stuff, right? Was that, right?
Isn't that right, Mayor? Five, five, six?
Five, five, six.
Okay, that's what I had. So we're talking, oh, seven, eight hundred thousand?
Eight eighteen, yes.
Eight eighteen.
How much of that was?
I.
How much of that's engineering?
Um, they don't want to give that break, I don't know how much.
You say, you said they included engineering.
That's probably not a giant cost in there, it's.
Well, that's what you guys talked about, hiring an engineer, so. Here and now.
Obviously, most of it was, was the concrete.
Oh, for the deck, absolutely.
And they gave that item, when they kind of split that out.
And the other concern, I'm worried, well, let's say we said we want to replace that, we want to do the deck. The deck's bad, the pool's bad, the room's bad. We can't know what the pipes are like in the ground. I'll bet they're no better than anything we're dealing with right now.
Because they're still forty-seven years old.
Well, and they're in the ground, things are in the ground, don't tend to, unless your situation's, yes, right, but you don't even know. You end up with more corrosion and problems underground than you do above-ground a lot of times. So the fact that we'd have to do some intrusive investigation just to look at that, and, I don't know, spend this kind of money not, not doing that at the least, to see what kind of condition that's in. Because that goes into that room, right? Like, let's say the main pipes to the pool failed at some point, you'd be ripping into concrete, those walls, and in the pool, and digging it all up to fix it.
Would you have to do this in two separate phases or some, something? Would you have to do the concrete and the outside work and, and the piping or whatever, and then do the inside? Would you do it in, or at the same time?
We'd have option, we could do it both ways.
But I mean, the thing is, doing the room and fixing the pool doesn't do anything to the pipes in.
Right.
And I'll bet you, like, if something came up there, we could end up with a number that's worse than any of this.
Because then we wouldn't have a pool, we would have, like, a whole winter.
Well, we have an isolated pool, a nice pop room, need a couple million to fix the pipes between them. That, to me, do not, that's a tough one to do.
I am of the mind to, to, I think the pool has been a, it is a wonderful nostalgic city component. And I think we hear from a vocal minority at times about what they like and they don't like. But I can't see investing eight hundred thousand into something where we don't know the infrastructure underneath that is already underutilized. I would concur with Alderman, Candace, and Robinson that I would, I would recommend also that we look to, to remove the pool. You know, we have the opportunity to have a state-of-the-art, a wonderful splash pad park if, uh, we get the approval through the Army Corps of Engineers, is what my understanding is, and, and that hold up there. I don't think that we deface it would potentially, I mean, heaven forbid they fail, right? When we went into this project and we were talking about it, we already knew that they were, I think Chris had told us they were forty-seven years old when we went and did that, right? And the question was, what if it fails? What are we gonna do? So, well, here we are. You know, it's, it, it's not gonna pass without two hundred and sixty-two thousand, and that doesn't even fix the concrete.
But keep in mind, if that was the way you wound up going, there still would be a cost to remove it, we couldn't just leave the pool sitting there like that.
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's the right thing to do. Maybe the, obviously, there'd be some changes in engineering, but maybe we go back to where that, that filtration room becomes a filtration room for the new thing, we could save enough to cover the engineering costs, if anything, at least.
Well, we'd be changing, we'd be spending more on design at this point, because they'd not planned on using that room, so you'd have to go back and change the design, so there would be a cost there.
Right, I'm saying, we, the splash pad has a design with an exterior building, maybe there's enough savings to at least save the engineering cost to go and use the room. You know, it gets gutted, it gets redone, but then you don't have an added facility with a roof and heat and that to take care of too, so you've got some costs, you're gonna recoup over the life of it.
Uh, so I just, I want to remind, you know, and, and all of us were here, I mean, even the newly elected Alderman, um, were here when, when this conversation came up. And, and this has been something that we've, we've, you know, batted back and forth. Uh, and I want to remind the council that we have, we gave our go-ahead and our commitment to keep the pool. Um, and I, for, for better or for worse, and, and if, you know, I'm just reminding, I, I think we've, if I recall correctly, what Clark Patterson Lee or the previous DPW director, I, I can't recall, said that we could try to save up over the course of three years or so, setting aside a hundred thousand dollars a year to do this project, uh, replacing the pumps. And, and, and I guess it's here quicker than, than the three-year timeframe that we were given. You know, the idea was that the splash park would revitalize and bring something new, a park environment to Warvets, that they would complement each other. I still believe that, I still support that. Um, some things are the cost of doing business. And if we are investing all over our city, our wonderful city, um, this is an investment. And, um, I, I have confidence, as I've seen the council put in serious significant investment into the ice skating rink, that our rec department makes very significant revenues from it. Um, and is one of the best revenue drivers in the city, I believe this can be that as well. I understand it's a large chunk of change, uh, when you're faced with both the deck and the pump room, but I don't think it behooves us to, to continuously flip-flop on this issue. We are ninety-five percent of the way, at least from the latest communication through the Army Corps of Engineers, they're, they're, they're finalizing some things. Now to just say that we're gonna go back to the drawing board, I can't get behind that. Um, we, we collectively made a decision, and it got approved, and now we've got to do, you know, this was also a compromise with the community too. Those that, that felt that the pool, a municipal pool is, is critical to summertime, you know, in Olean. So I think it's a bitter pill, but I think we need to look at how, how we make everything work.
So, I agree that it was a compromise to move the project forward, but when we initially talked about, I believe it was only Alderman Anastasia that really was wanting to keep the pool, that we had all kind of collectively agreed that municipalities were getting rid of pools and that we were looking to, to put in a state-of-the-art facility, and we wanted to get rid of the pool. Again, I think we have a vocal minority that talks about wanting to keep the pool, and that got some traction, so in order to move the project forward, some of us agreed to compromise so that we could have, um, a project, and I remember that, you know, Alderman Forni had talked about, you know, utilizing it to, to, um, kind of rejuvenate, right, and do some things with the pool. At that time, we had expressed concerns about the forty-seven-year-old equipment that was in there, and that what kind of, we weren't even sure if it was gonna be able to open up after COVID, and we got fortunate, it opened up. We are not in the sixties and the fifties and the seventies anymore. More people have pools in their backyard than ever before. I think that we do a disservice to the community by investing this money without knowing what's, what's underneath, in terms of the, um, the piping. I think that, you know, it is a wonderful, listen, I have great memories, you know, and the only people I talk to that are interested in the pool, quite honestly, are people who are my age, who have children, who went there and hung out there and stuff. And I think that's great, and if we were looking to, and, and we also, it was a compromise when we said, look, well, you know, and I said, well, then let's put money aside so that we, you know, we kind of, but now that it's here and we're there, I don't see it as, as flip-flopping. We had a project, and, and John, it was your project, that you brought up that didn't include the pool. And we have, uh, an outline, and we have a design that doesn't include it, that already includes, um, removing the pool. So it's not like we need different design work. Um, if we wanted to incorporate, uh, you know, kind of into the pump room, that might be different, but we already have the design work, it's already done, we already saw it. We were already all on board with it until we got this kind of save the pool, um, murmur in the community, right? So, I don't know where we go from here, because it seems like we're, you know, kind of divided on this, but I, I will say that I think we were all cohesive initially with the idea that we would remove the pool.
So I want to just clarify, Alderman McCall, when, when the idea first was brought forward, it was to, um, the very first presentation was to revitalize the pool. It was put, it was the, uh, presentation headed adjacent to the pool. When we started listening to Clark Patterson Lee, the engineering on it, and started to evaluate the situation of the pool, that's when the council said, well, maybe it's for the best, right? Because of, for all the, everything Jason said is not wrong, right? It is archaic, just like everything else in this uh, municipal building of ours, right? So everything is old, and, um, and that's when, you know, collectively, we've looked at that option. And then I think, you know, as our job as, as representatives is to also listen to, uh, the public too, and, and, and that's where, you know, I guess I came from as far as a compromise goes. Um, everything, you, you make very great valid points, um, I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I'm sorry. Um, you know, I, I actually agree with John, because, um, putting nostalgia aside, you know, like, like, you have the memories, but, um, as I do think that we have, you know, a gem of Warvets Park, and having Splash Pad, or the Splash Park, being able to utilize the pool in a different way, along with that, and really, you know, bringing programming to the park, is something we can use to drive revenue, um, you know, a place for families and, and children, as well as a tourist attraction, which is going to, um, support, you know, other, and it's gonna have a positive economic impact for Olean. So I, I still kind of stand on, you know, coming in to lay, you know, to the conversation. Um, I think that's when we came into the conversation is when, um, when that came back to the pool staying, and we had a new presentation. So I do still kind of stand by that, my initial thoughts.
Other thoughts on that?
What's that? Where are you at? Well, I was the one that was finally saying the pool as long as with, uh, with Jen, if you remember correctly. I was also one of the ones that cautioned about, like, Alderman Robinson, who was paying, I'm not picking on him, but he talked about losing money. And then when we voiced concerns about possibly not making a profit on other things, I was told that we're not in the business of making money. So, while it is a loss, it still serves the community. And how many years ago, Bill, did they do some work inside that pool for how much? I mean, you're, you're already in the pool for a good amount of money, and it wasn't open somewhere in COVID, that was, how much was spent there?
When we renovated the rec center, there was also some work done on the pool, and, uh, I don't know, because I think we did over three hundred thousand dollars in work.
I was thinking it was somewhere around five hundred thousand, it was like eighteen or nineteen.
I thought it was a couple hundred, maybe.
It was done on the two faces, it was over the floors in two sections, I mean.
Right, the floor, raised that up.
And retired it?
Yes, there was retiring, because there was something to do with.
We did the, we did the, uh, little kids' pool portion of it, did a lot of work there.
And I know that, that to me personally, I thought, um, you know, with revitalizing that area, like Jen wasn't of popular opinion, but maybe consolidating that we have the one at Fran Shop, you have this one. I was of the mind of trying to somehow consolidate them into all one location, is where I was more at, to, to try to have some cost savings in other places. Like, uh, you know, I'd say that maybe expanding that small waiting area in the Warvets Pool and, you know, not that people want to hear this, but closing the Fran Shop, but not really closing it by enlarging that one, everything's at one. You don't need to have lifeguards there, you don't need to have lifeguards here too, you consolidate your, your labor pool. I know that's where I was at personally, and that's because I think that, well, there are a number of pools in the, in the area in people's backyards, I, I have one, but my wife still takes the kids down there on occasion, so I mean, I'm not making a base on that, I mean, I think it still serves a purpose, and I think this summer, there was a number of rec programs that came from outside correct.
And we could look back over the average number of people who attended daily, you know? I think that, that does come into it, because when we say we're serving the community, what percentage of the community are we truly serving with it? You know, I.
But also with that, if you're bringing outside people in, as Alderman, Alderman, before we, before we talked about, that's also good too, maybe we're not down to direct service to ours, but you also have to look at the number of outside coming in. I'm not saying it's a huge revenue number, I'm just saying, maybe it's not a total, total loss.
So is there a way for us to evaluate the pipes, the in-ground pipes?
Well, they're the same age, and if you look here on their cost here, this cost does not include any repair to the pool's perimeter drains, which are those, those drains. You can camera them, you can dig them up, when they're under the concrete, they are going to be the same age as everything else.
I thought they did, I thought they still can.
I, I thought that when we talked about this, I know Jen and I, who just came on, and that question was.
I don't think we discussed that in terms of the piping underneath.
I thought that.
I asked, I didn't get a proper answer.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I remember you asking, and I was gonna say, I thought somebody answered, and they, we said that those were okay.
I don't know.
And I thought.
I, I know you were saying that, but I'm saying, I remember him asking that, and I think that was kind of the answer, that John's also kind of remembering.
That's all I remember, I thought CPL did a snake.
So that, I mean, that could go into our decision-making if we, if the piping is, if we can get reasonable assurance that it'll last us another twenty years.
Right.
You know, I.
The underground piping left in place underneath, twenty more years?
Yeah. Guarantee.
Well, because are we gonna invest eight hundred thousand dollars to dig it up, right? Are we gonna, you know, look, because the last thing we want to do is, I get that we have three hundred thousand into it already, but you've heard, heard the expression throwing good money in after bad, right? So if, we don't want. So we don't want to be digging up what we just did and the money we invested of eight hundred thousand, if the piping is crap, literally, right? So if there's a way for us to have reassurance that this piping will only last us ten years, right?
Well, if we analyze what the cost, like, let's say they look at that and it's in rough shape and we know it's another two million, are we, are we more aligned on what we do with it?
Piping's not a great cost. It's really, once you've got it all red dogged, it's piping in the ground, it's not, it's all red and out compared to whatever other stuff we're doing. I wouldn't expect that to be, that wouldn't break the bank.
So should we get a price on what it would cost to replace the pipes?
Nobody lying, Robert.
That was mentioned.
The problem with lining is if they're too, why are we lining? Are we lining because of leaks or are we lining, lining because of buildup? And if, and every time you're lining, you're reducing the volume and we're required to have-
So to spill it, the lining's that good, but if it's leaks, then that's okay?
But either way, when we're done lining it, we've reduced the volume and now we've affected the pump because you have so many turnovers in a certain period of time. So you have, you have to have four turnovers in a twenty-four hour period. So now we've reduced the volume, we increased the pump sizes, there's a lot more to come into play here if we reduce that. We may not be-
But if we've got to replace the pumps anyways?
Still may not be able to.
If you replace the pump, it's still the volume coming back through the restricted line.
So it, it may not be a viable answer. Honestly, if we're ripping up a deck and doing all that, the pipe is nothing.
I mean, because the pipe is, there's not a, a lot of, meaning pipe.
No, and it's just not about there.
Well, but I imagine your critical points are going to be where you go through that wall into that treatment zone. Right? Like, that's where you're going to get your corrosion, that's where you're going to get your ground oxygen interface, and that's where your roughest condition is.
Treatment room wall and the pool wall.
The leaks I've seen in others tended to be on these perimeter drains that are built into the concrete around the pool. That tends to be where you have problems. You can't ever see it.
Like we talked about doing this study on this building, what, I mean, is there a way to get a viable report on everything?
These were rough numbers from C P L. If we want them to give us the more detailed breakdown, if that's what you want, we could go back to them there.
Sounds reasonable.
I think we need to know what. I mean, I understand. Is there a way to actually get it to, to know?
We could have this conversation with C P L.
Okay. And we'll have real numbers to be able to make a decision on. So what's a reasonable timeframe to say we should bring this there? Well, I mean, do you think, when they have numbers, but yeah, will it take like four weeks or, you know, what do you think is your best guess?
And then-
Or is to prove that?
Some kind of estimation. We're just going to have a number on it. It's going to be a while.
Probably that pool's not open next year.
How long, yeah, I was going to say, uh, factor in, how long do you think the construction would take to do all that? How long do you think it would take, Robert?
Take a few months. So the more and more we're asking them, are we basically saying that we want to contract with C P L that was a designer?
I would support that.
We might have to, uh, we might have to do a change order, see what additional costs would be for them to do this.
They're only going to do so much of this for us for free. And we keep asking more and more of them, they don't want to be paid to do this properly, otherwise it's nasty.
Are they doing this on, you're saying, three, on part of the splash bed work that they're?
We reached out to them and said, hey, do you have, can you give us a rough estimate? And they sent us a little rough estimate.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to get a comprehensive.
Now, with that being-
That's got a number on it. We need to think about.
Said, I think, uh, see the, and, and, and Robert, if you need to go back and check your, you know, file on it, but I, I want to say when the council said the go-ahead to do the cement work, included a change order for engineering for a C P L to design the, because they've got pretty good numbers on the deck, the deck work. Those are exact estimates because they did the work on that. And we built that in for all of this additional, additional stuff we have, we didn't give them this kind of ballpark, right? So there would be a change order, I don't know what it would look like, but, um, just to, just to make sure everybody knows what we're talking about.
So, to make sure my understanding is right, so are we looking at a resolution next week to authorize us to work with C P L on this, is that?
I'm in favor of that.
To include, um, assessment of and replacement of, if needed, the piping.
And development of a, a full comprehensive estimate?
Yeah, filtration of the pump.
Yep.
So you want that for next Tuesday?
Oh, the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're clear. We can get, we can get that in there.
I'd say that a lot of it. And what are general thoughts?
Okay. We're good with that? Okay. I actually just have, have one thing. So I was going to ask Lenz, and I'm sorry, I meant this. We had talked about a quarterly, at least a quarterly, um, capital fund update balance. Can we get that? Because I think we're coming to the end of the quarter.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Just one question, Robert, I don't know, Phil was asked, did they start that? We had allocated some funds for that, the ash tree project. Is that?
Yep, that's, that's in place. We're, I'm working on it. We've been taking some down. I don't know how much we want to go into tonight on this, or?
Well, we, we, uh, I guess we'll just tell you that the, the forester didn't last very long. He resigned. So we're back, uh, we have a plan.
Yes.
We have a plan, so.
It involves some personnel decisions I don't think we should be putting out here right now, but there is a plan to still meet that requirement and spend the money.
Oh, real hard, yeah. Sorry. Just, I, um, just got an email about that someone in our area has ash trees that, whatever. So, um, just because it's the first time, this is, um, do they, like, is there, like, they go online and just put a application in for, did someone come look at them or?
They should have contacted our office and then we'll go through the process with them and they need to, um, we'll, the forester will go out and assess the tree. A lot of people just want them down, so those sedes come down and we want to look at it as a perfectly healthy tree with no effect. So we would have our forester assess that. And then based on that decision, we leave it, we trim it, we take it down, and then we go from there. If it's an ash tree, it's going to come down. It's just a question of which one's worse right now.
Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right, second? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Am I your alderman?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. Okay. Call your alderman. All right, have a good night. Sorry.
All right, so we just got to break an hour fifteen minute record.
Okay, I'm on it.
So call to order the city operations committee, let the record show that all members are present with the exception of Alderman Anastasia. Can we get a motion for the approval of the minutes from November seventh, twenty-three?
Motion.
Alderman Kansas, a second. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unfinished business. A, that actually was kicked out too. Captain Bauer thought that after the first of the year, he would have something on that. That was that one you weren't here, Tiffany. He thought that, so just after the first of the year, I can't remember what the Tuesday was, is what we were targeting on that.
There was one for the rental inspection as well, after the first of the year, so I'll put that.
Both of them were, so to come to the first committee meetings after the first of the year is what we discussed.
The sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yeah. I think it was sixteen.
January sixteenth. Okay? And then for new referrals was the city-owned properties. And then that was the vacant or vacant land parcels and structures owned by the city currently, correct? Is what we were doing?
Yeah. Yeah, we provided, everybody would be typically provided the, uh, the city's law on city-owned properties. And we're, and we'll be putting together a list and, uh, for all of you. And then we can decide if we're going to, uh, how we're going to handle the matter, put it out for R F P on these properties. I think that was one of the thoughts.
Okay. Is there anything else on the city-owned, uh, Jack?
I did, I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. Sir, did you send Alderman Anastasia an email and did you copy me on it?
Yeah.
Can you, can you please, um, remind me your, your last, what I can search by? Your last name? For your, for your business?
The business email or the firestone services?
Okay. Is Alderman Anastasia, there it is. So I want to, uh, on this matter, um, because Alderman Anastasia is, is not here, uh, bring forward a proposal, uh, for flux property concepts in regards to a city-owned property at three oh one West Oak Street. And so this went to Dave and, uh, and myself. And so I'm going to, for everyone's sake, I will forward this to everyone. I'm sorry I didn't do this. I had a time. I don't know if Alderman Anastasia did.
I have numbers to get in.
Okay. All right. Um, so just for the sake of communication, um, I, I don't expect, I mean, there's not to be any action taken tonight, but, um, the object is, again, pertains to three oh one West Oak Street. This is something, this is kind of the, the process that at least we've done in the past. It is a vacant three-unit multifamily home. Uh, it's currently owned by the city of Oleen. Uh, so there is an ongoing purchase, uh, a purchase offer, uh, offer, um, being made. I forwarded that on to you. So it essentially states the, the rehabilitation plan, so I'll go over that. Once the property is acquired, the company then plans to initiate a rehabilitation and renovation project to restore its value and enhance the marketability of it. It includes a new roof siding, new wiring, all new electric services, plumbing, all finishing work and so forth to bring everything up to code and make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing to the street, um, as well as interior for future tenants. And so they're looking to make it a valuable asset within the community and the neighborhood. And so, um, they're looking at getting this multifamily home back in the tax roll. And, and so they're looking to expedite this as, as quickly as possible. So I just wanted to bring this forward, uh, on behalf of Alderman Anastasia tonight, uh, as far as the city-owned properties. And so what I would suggest is we all take a look at it. Um, next week, we could even, I believe, Mayor, because it's contractual, could we not go into executive session to discuss this?
Uh, yes, yes. And just so everybody knows, we do have at least one other person that recently wants to, uh, wants to put in a bid on that property also, so.
I would, um, I would suggest that, uh, again, just as, as kind of a notice, it's, at least in the past, it's kind of a Ben first serve, uh, you know, first come, first served. So if there's an alternative proposal, um, that we could have by next week, so we could go into executive session to discuss that, um, that would be favorable. Does it, Jack, does that, as a contractual sale of property, would that fall under the rules of, of executive session?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll, uh, we'll leave the, the remainder of the details, um, for that discussion.
What was the address?
Three oh one West Oak Street.
Tiffany, can you just make three oh one West Oak the agenda item, please, instead of the encompassing city-owned property list? But didn't that, uh, wait, read that, but didn't that also include the parcel next to it? Wasn't there two addresses given? Okay, I thought there was-
It's kind of a funny shaped lot.
I thought there was a one that somebody talked about, there was a vacant lot next door to it that gave another address. It wasn't that one, it was a different one, sorry. So three oh one West Oak. Is there anything else on that?
That's it, I think.
Okay. Anything else for city ops? No committee reports, motion for adjournment?
I motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I call.
Well, you didn't have Robert come. You didn't have Robert come. Not to say anything bad about Robert. You know, he's taken all his good news.
All right, I've called the order of the public safety committee to the December twelfth. Let the record show all members present, uh, with the exception of Anastasia. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty-first. Uh, second by being all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unfinished business. We have none. New referrals, we have Lawrence Street and North Second Street bump outs.
Okay, so I had actually a couple of people, I've been meeting with residents on North Second for a couple of things and, and I had a couple of people approach me. By the way, one likes the bump outs, she walks a lot and she says she, she really appreciates them. On the other hand, and I drove back down it today and actually I did the Third Street onto, you know, Lawrence onto Third Street turn two. Because I've done it a couple of times because the, the concern is that particularly with that bump out, and I'm not sure if they're all standard, but when you come out, you actually cannot avoid going into the other lane. Maybe if you had a, a really small car. So we want to make it walkable only, but we also want to make it safe drivable only. So I'm just, and, and that's one of the questions that came up, are all the bump outs the same size? And, you know, how do we, because the, I get the idea and I explained it to everyone, it's to make, you know, um, to narrow the gap so that when people are walking that they're, they're safe. But that didn't negate the concern that, you know, one resident said when he was, uh, going down North Second, turning onto Lawrence, he almost hit a police car. I've done it twice and, and my car, the Explorer has a great turning radius and, um, it's a challenge going from, um, Lawrence onto actually Third Street. If I caught the corner of the curve, I didn't go in the other lane, didn't need to do that, by the way. So just that's, you know, part of it is informational, so I could go back to the resident. The other is to say, you know, there is a legitimate concern if the bump out is out in such a way that we have traffic there that is going into the other lane when they're turning, so. So that's where I'm at in terms of the safety issue.
Well, I can, I can adjust some of that.
Thanks.
We, we have some issues there, uh, and it's because of the offside of First Street. Those nine, nine eighty, ninety degree, you know, you got it with you going north on First Street. And I, I, I think, I don't know if you misspoke or what, but somebody going on Second Street had a problem turning?
No, it's coming down Second Street, turning onto Lawrence. And somebody did mention the one on First Street. I hadn't included that, but their response was, I think it's on the wrong side. But no, I mean, going down Lauren, or coming down, um, Second Street, turning onto Lawrence.
Uh, the bump out at First and Lawrence has now caused, uh, the old bus to change routes because, uh, they can't make that turn and they can't, they can't even jog over to First, so that's an issue. Uh, we've been getting some complaints on that, that you, you know, does throw you in, although, uh, I don't know. But I can make the turn, my truck can not go in the other lane, so, uh, I don't know what's going on there with other people. But there is some concerns about that and, uh, and it's causing, uh, we may have- And, uh, uh, and it's causing, uh, we may have issues with plowing. Is this, uh, we're gonna try it. Dave Robert, you have some thoughts on it too?
Yes, the, um. Did that work?
Has a light on it.
Did that work?
Just presented.
So. You wanna, we'll go for a personal best here tonight, go a little longer?
You don't.
These bump outs are there, we know why they're there, they're part of your, uh, your bike lane, walk only. It's gonna be very problematic with plowing, we're going to attempt to do it. We're gonna see how it works, uh, need to pick up plowing, I mean, we have to be flexible, there's things in the way. The options here are live with it or remove them. Removing them is costly. We just spent on the whole Lawrence Street quarter there, we, two hundred and eighty-two thousand on all these drainage, um, improvements, bump outs and such. I don't have a breakdown, how much is a bad intersection, but there'd be substantial now. We repurposed some manholes to catch basins and we made some changes there, we'd have to go back and take a look. So it'll be expensive, we would need to be basically funded for this, to do this, but it is an issue. Plows are an issue, the traffic's an issue, I, I can't disagree with what you said, I don't know if anyone else got anything to add about it, but.
Robert, I just let, do the, the bump outs, the, the concerns, do they meet design standards for the streets? Is there anything wrong with the design or is it just?
No, this is an odd geometry because of the way the roads are offset. It really, they're, they're standard designs, it's just the way it's doglight there, it just doesn't lend itself to this very well. To go around it, it kicks you out. Or snowplow ends up in the other lane and our bus company's got issues with that. I guess I understand that.
So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Alderman Robinson's old neighbor, but I spent some time in DC. And there's all kinds of wild, crazy places to squeeze into and people manage to do it, and that's the way it is. And I think there's a lot of, people need to get used to new things. That needs to settle in to some extent too, before we can jump to conclusions.
Well, the summer has to because if we, we can't take it out right now, because we can't move the structures this time of year, we, the planes aren't open for asphalt. It does have to stay, at least through the winter, so, uh, we do have to live with it for a bit. Depending on your decision.
Crawford?
Whose committee is this? Well, for what it's worth, when did we put the bump outs in on King Street? Three years ago? Is that about right?
Yeah, yeah, what was that, probably five years ago.
Cause I, cause I, I pretty much on a daily basis heard my, my mother complain about that. Um, that she was gonna run over them and through them and couldn't go around them. She doesn't complain about them. So change is hard and, um, you know, and, and, and obviously nobody wants traffic accidents. I think that's, that's a major concern. But it's, it's kind of interesting, uh, as, uh, as we, I think, evolve kind of as a society to be more cognizant of walkability and we make these things, we seem to make vehicles even bigger. Uh, so we just keep making vehicles bigger, but our roads are smaller. We could also reference, uh, what is it, Main Street, everybody? I don't have any problems with that, but, um, anyways, that's, that's my two cents. I, and just to follow up with, because not to kind of change what your concerns are, so we're talking about North First Street, you've got concerns about North Second Street, same concept, right? The bump outs they put there, is that right?
Yeah, and, and actually North First was one, I just didn't kind of get that on there because they had mentioned the bus couldn't, couldn't make the turn and a variety of things. So, you know, I, I think everyone understands that, you know, it takes a while for change. Like, listen, all I know is I'm gonna go slow around there and if there's a big vehicle in the other lane, I'm gonna, I'm gonna slow down and wait for that vehicle to, to move if I think I, you know, and, and I'm pretty in tight in terms of my turns. So, um, it is a concern and I think it's a concern from some of our older residents and, and, you know, how do we manage? And then we'll see how the plows go with the, you know, over here and what we need to do to, to adjust. And you're right, there's lots of weird streets that people have to adjust to.
Came from main front, but I mean, what you just said, you're gonna slow down and you're gonna wait, that's the point of the design. If I remember correctly, so.
That's exactly.
It's doing what it's supposed to do, we all need to take it in a little bit, slow down.
Well, you know what, you took my summer because I was just gonna wait till everybody got done and just reiterate that, uh, one, I think secondary was to slow down traffic, I think the primary reason was to eliminate the distance from point A to point B for our residents, so there's a safety aspect to it. So, I mean, and like you said, in DC, I mean, you could be traveling down Eleventh Street and when you cross street, you're on Thirteenth. Help me figure that out, but that's the way the streets are designed. Uh, in Oleen, we don't have that problem, uh, that First Street one is like a time zone. When you get there, you have the little bump out and then you come across and, and go across. It's unfortunate that that's the way that came out, uh, you hope that, uh, something like that would be caught in the design, but it is what it is. We have it at two hundred and eighty-two thousand. Uh, I don't foresee that being fixed anytime soon. So, you know, like everyone else has said, it's unfortunate, I guess we have to live with it. Uh, we invested in it, it's gonna help, uh, and hopefully, you know, we don't have any accidents or anything like that in that, uh, intersection or the one afterwards. Anything else on Lawrence and Second before we move on to the next?
No.
All right, we're moving on to Reed Street and North Sixth Crosswalk.
Okay, so I've had a number of people bring up a concern. And so when you come down Reed Street from the high school and, and what it seems to be, I think everybody is in pretty much agreement. And then you get to the crosswalk that's by, um, where the track is, right? I think almost everybody's in agreement that they think it's high school students that are leaving, coming down the hill at too fast a rate and they've seen a number of, um, students that come from the middle school sometimes because their parents are picking them up and stuff, almost get hit. So that is, is, so much so that one of the, the residents, actually not in my ward, says, I won't even take, I won't even go pick up my grandkids there because I'm so fearful something bad is gonna happen and I don't wanna see it. So that's kind of, you know, how do we make that section safer? That's, that's the question. We know that it's rough up by the school with, you know, tight turns and it, it's really congested. But this does seem to be a legitimate, um, concern about, you know, how do we make this safer? You know, one of the residents said, you know, she suggested we kind of go sit, you know, not, not in a police car or something, but kind of in, in look and see what the issue is. And so I've watched and, and I do think that it is unfortunately primarily high school students leaving too quickly, not paying attention, coming down that road. So I guess I'm just saying, you know, what do we do to make it safer for the kids that are crossing there? Cause we know that's a rough corner with Seventh Street and everything else there.
Well, it has a crosswalk and there's no stop, is that what we have there?
There's no stop in there. Yeah, and, and the crosswalk itself looks like it's kind of, it's, it's not really vis- real visible, super visible.
No stop, I was trying to think of a problem there, like, is it from the high school direction?
Yes, it's the high school going down the hill. Yeah, and, and it was a consensus that it does seem to be high school students are going down too quickly, not really paying attention, trying to get out of there. And then you have younger kids trying to cross.
I think that might occur to me, slightly so it's, you know.
I, if you're asking for suggestions, I, so I picked up Lila there, um, and I would, I would, uh, after, you know, I would obviously check with our, our, uh, experts. Um, but I, I do believe from, uh, the fact that there is such a heavy use to crossing, that that should have a stop sign at the, at the bottom of the, the hill, um, before the crosswalk. It's, it is the race of everyone to get out of there. Um, we, we should look at possible no parking, no standing. It is a free-for-all, people are pulling up on, I mean, it's, it's all over the place, right? People are pulling up and parking on people's yards, in the, in the city driveway, right up to the, the crosswalk, I mean, and so you got kids that are, you know, whatever, three foot five or whatever, right? Walking out and again, um, there are massive, uh, Tahoe, you know, big SUVs. Uh, it is, it, it is concerning. So I'm really glad that you brought this up and if there's a way to improve the safety there for the heavy usage of the, of the kids that are coming and going from there, I, I would a hundred percent support that. But if, this is just for conversation sake, I would work with, um, certainly the DPW Director, it gets my business, please chief too. Food for thought.
Ben?
I was just gonna ask, Robert, just on the short and immediate, what would it do to push the crosswalk to the other side of Sixth Street? It's on the high school side of Sixth Street currently, correct?
Yes.
So it's right at the, kind of, it's right at the very foot of the hill?
That's correct, and then there's no one for perpendicular across.
Perpendicular across six?
Yes.
So I was asking for the crossing of, that's, is that Reed? No, yeah. If you push that across, so you would have to cross six and then cross. It would also be in line closer with the entrance to the track, down there on that flat section of road.
Would that create a, a, a blind spot though?
No, I think it's kind of a blind spot because like when you're talking, when you come down through there, them cars are parked there. When they're crossing on the high school side of Sixth Street, they're kind of hidden there. And then all of a sudden they pop up, so that's why I was asking, cause then there'd be a vision of there's the Sixth Street, which is a natural break-in vision, they can't park down the street. So you could see them in the crosswalk and that would also put it more in line with just right straight across from that gate going into the track. Cause that's where they go, they cross that and then they, then they can use that with the sidewalk, they can cut across the track and they add and round it over to the middle school.
I guess what I, we can, we can kind of spitball, I, I might suggest maybe, you know, either yourself and a couple of, you know, another Alderman, maybe Alderman Robinson, and, um, ask to set the meeting maybe with the police chief and, and Director Thompson, if you may, or whatever, right? And go and look at and then just walk it and, and see what makes sense. I, yeah, I, I agree with, uh, all, I can't visualize it though, right now. So I agree with, uh, what Alderman Benyon's saying. There's a tremendous amount of usage there at the track. Kids are coming to practice and stuff like that and then my kids are leaving and it's just, and, and all, a lot of the students, but you know what? Some teachers too are bucking it out of there, so, uh, anyways.
Well, I'm feeling a little cynical, hey, put some bump outs on there. Put a bump out, not only are you putting the people closer together, you're putting them out near the curb where if someone's coming down the hill from either way, they're right there where people can be seen as they cross. And then people will find other alternatives instead of flying down that hill, so we just read her every track.
It's a narrow road, that would be the best option.
Eh, yeah.
Or it's lethal.
You, you're gonna make it where it's, because the road is already now, like you said, it, it's gonna be, uh, taking turns to try to get through there, is what's gonna turn into. I, I was just, you know, throwing it out there, but, I, I mean, I'd be more than willing to, uh, work with someone on that one to, to come talk to someone and, uh, see what's the best alternative for that area down there. Maybe there's a school area, uh, maybe we could also work with the school and say, hey, what do you guys think is best for this area, you know, for when your kids let out and, maybe it's something with their scheduling, how they let people out. Maybe if they let out in groups, you know, maybe if the teachers let out at a certain time.
Really, it's a lot, make it one way.
Or that too, you know, you'd always make it one way.
Well, that is what they want, please, please, please.
Two, wow, cause one, like third and fourth, cause both of them, you can go two directions. The third street's kind of more, it's, uh, it's pretty tight.
That is an option, so that's something we can revisit, that's your awards.
Okay.
All right, uh, any other questions or anything for this committee? Yes, plenty.
Yeah, um, so I had a couple, um, residents call, um, they live south, uh, First Street, so over Irving, like the dead end, dark, uh, dirt, cobblestone, whatever kind of road it is. Um, so, and I know we don't have this problem yet because it hasn't snowed. But there is a lot, uh, several, um, elderly people on that road as well as like physically challenged, a lot of, you know, health issues of, of residents that are on that road. So, um, a couple concerns they have is a condition of the road. Um, when they're, um, moving around and about, um, not, they don't have a lot of good mobility. Um, I think some have walkers and so forth. Um, but another concern is it's not plowed or, uh, they had stated, doesn't get plowed on a regular basis. Um, and they're worried, um, as far as if there was an emergency, uh, that would happen and the road isn't plowed or, um, an ambulance couldn't get to them or a family couldn't get to them, um, safely. So, cause I, so I, I, I said I would bring it up, I don't know, um, we haven't had snow yet, not got wood. Um, and I don't know what the process is for, um, plowing and ma- and, you know, maintaining that road. Um, just in general as far as the repair, um, if that's an option or on the schedule or, um, whatnot, so.
What room is it?
It's, um, South Union, no, not South Union, South First, I'm sorry. But it's the, the over, uh, over Irving, yeah, or, yeah, over Irving, like the dead end side. So if you come down from the church, you cross Irving and then there's that dead end.
I'll look.
Okay, thank you. Cops, cobblestone dirt. A little broken cobble.
What was the cops doing those days?
Oh, Mayor, do you wanna add anything to that? No, okay. Still over the cob, cobble.
I know exactly where she's, it's, it's an unimproved street, I'm sure it's, uh, so, Robert, I'll check here, but.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, uh, no further concerns, uh, there's no committee reports, uh, to approve, uh, so I'll make a motion adjourned. Second, second by Bane on favor.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned.
I call the old committee of the old for Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Left record show that all over present with the exception of Alderman Anastasia. First, we have PL ninety-four dash twenty-three by Alderman Crawford, designated West Henley Street as a bike boulevard. Uh, this is something that I brought before the council, um, a few months back. Uh, and so I, we had reached out, asked for a traffic study to be conducted, um, by DPW. And the traffic study came back, um, that, uh, Director Thompson ran, that it does, uh, it's not the ideal circumstances or it does not require a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles an hour. Uh, so the, um, per, the, the, the new state guidelines. Um, so I met with the mayor, I met with, uh, Robert and, uh, said, you know, the, the idea at least as we move forward, um, with kind of the full street design plans, um, and as we're gonna be moving into, um, work next summer on South Union Street, adding, uh, bike lanes and so forth, uh, shared use paths, was to continue that, that, kind of that visual. Um, and so Director Thompson suggested, you can have a bike boulevard without reducing the speed limit. You know, maybe that's the, the direction we'd go first. So it would just come with increased visibility, would come with street lining and, and, you know, kind of some share of the road ideas. And the idea is to connect it down to the, uh, Allegheny River Trail entrance, uh, at the end of West Henley Street. And then have that, uh, bike boulevard kind of be a, a flow through, uh, up to South Union Street and into kind of that, that biking network, uh, that we're creating around the city. So, um, that's the proposal that I'm, I'm bringing forward tonight. Uh, I thought it was a, a fair compromise, although residents on West Henley Street would, uh, would love to see a reduction in the speed limit. Um, maybe we take it in, in baby steps and, and see how just increased signage, lining and so forth, um, may improve and, and slow people down, right? And I would also love some bump outs, uh, we'd love to see some bump outs on West Henley Street too. Uh, it's a wide street, so Robert, if you're looking for any places, let me know. Um, and, uh, and so, yeah, this is, uh, it's, it's, it's everything but that, that speed reduction and, and kind of evaluate and see how things go.
So to do that?
Alderman and Benyon.
So to do all that, do you need it designated as a bike boulevard to do this signage and?
You, you do, I mean, I, I think we still wanna formalize a process, um, to approve designated bike boulevards and then kind of what that, what that entails, what that means, at least in title, in my opinion. Alderman Robinson?
So I just wanna add in here for, for time's sake anyway. Bike boulevard on Washington Street, uh, ridden bike and scooter down through there numerous times. Uh, people don't seem to wanna get out of the way, they wanna run you over. So lowering the speed limit there seems to be a great idea. Uh, at least that makes it where if the police comes up, it's enforceable at least. Uh, on Henley Street, numerous times I've driven down there, e- even though it seems like the same with road, for some reason, people are a little more patient over there. So, uh, and I know when we talk-
So, uh, and I know when we talk about this way back, uh, I am for this, I, I don't, uh, have a problem with this at all, I think we need something on that side of town. Uh, I do have a problem with the, and I voiced this before, the, uh, Eleventh Street to Nineteenth Street, uh, Ward Six Drag Street. Uh, that's, it's just a free for all, there's no stop sign from Eleventh all the way down to Nineteenth. Uh, you see cars flying all the time, uh, both ways, you can see city employees going down there a little too fast. Uh, so with that, there's plenty of room for when the bikes move over, because there's hardly ever any cars down there. So to me, it still seems pretty safe to, to drive down there, I mean, yeah, I wouldn't put my kids in that situation if I wasn't willing to do it and I'm willing to do it, so I think that it, it's a great idea.
Uh, Alderman McCall.
So, and I'm fine with that too, what I would ask though is that perhaps some more, um, one day I sat outside my house and, actually, I, I videoed it and I was gonna send it to you guys. And about eight out of ten cars do not stop at First and Henley at all, right? Um, and that's a busy intersection for lots of people crossing and to read, seven eleven, et cetera, so, you know, I think maybe some additional, um, my father-in-law said, you know, he has dementia and he, he was out there and he goes, you know, there's all these people, don't stop, and I'm like, yeah, I know. So if we could maybe have some diff- some additional monitoring at, at that area, I mean, quite honestly, and where it is, is, it's coming from, um, Union and going down Henley. People tend to stop at the top of Henley, people tend to stop at the corner of First and Henley. No one, except for me, I made that mistake of not saying me last time. And, and Jen stopped for the most part at First and Henley.
I always stopped there.
Well, I didn't catch you on camera, had I caught you on camera, I would've been like, but I saw the mayor stop.
Are you, are you, do they blow right through it or they don't come to a complete stop?
Uh, both, and some, you know, if they slow down to twenty, maybe. And the others, you know, they're just rolling through, but they're.
It's actually eighteen.
Really, Tom? I wasn't gonna call you loud. For those two seconds.
You know, I, I wanna remind the older, uh, the aldermen, um, and, and we've had, uh, in the past, and, you know, maybe we forget about it, but we've had really good, um, working relationship with, with the mayor and the police department to, to just shoot an email and say, can we step, cause we know how the ebbs and flows are, you know, and the second we, yeah, say, hey, can you put somebody and have, you know, do some increased surveillance and have them sit, park at my parking on my driveway, whatever, right? And then it, it works and it calms things down for a couple of months and it's just cyclical.
Yep.
Um, so I would encourage everyone that if there is a, that hotspot, um, I, do we still have access to the speed, uh, sign thing that's mobile? You know, that's been something I've used on, on Washington Street in the past, and again, it's cyclical. It works for a little while and, you know, it calms people down, but I, I would just, so, just as a suggestion.
And maybe that's a good suggestion as we move forward for the bu- bike boulevard to have that up as just kind of a, hey, you guys should slow down from the forty that you're going or something.
Maybe bike boulevards should have all those permanent speed notifications on, as part of the design.
So I was gonna ask, when I was asking like what is a, what comes with being designated, so, I mean, maybe the process, process of, if something is designated as a bike boulevard, maybe there's something in writing that says, hey, we're designated, that's what comes with that.
Okay.
So, cause like you're saying, well, it's designated as a bike boulevard, but we're willing to this, this, that's what I was saying, like, you need to designate as a bike boulevard, I'm not against it.
Right.
So maybe there's like, uh, Robert's working on something, is the, the driveway apron process, to have something saying, something designated as a bike boulevard, it gets this, and perhaps maybe it's got the added expense or maybe one every half mile or something, just as a, a measurement, to say there's one of them things involved that, I don't know.
I'm a little bit late, no, we're age.
Something, I mean, it makes sense, right, so you can say, hey, you know, speed limit's thirty, here's what you're doing.
So, so right now, JR, the, the, uh, bike boulevards are, have the symbols on the road, right, it comes with the, the lane striping and then the, the share the road signs, essentially, but if we had other ideas that could, we could add to those, I think that's a great idea. Um, and we could, is that something we could work on with you, uh, Director Thompson? And then get some kind of feedback?
So it'd be, that's just, I know that this was on there and then it, it was referred to twice, and maybe just cause biking's probably not heavy right now, to just table that, to see if that process can come sooner rather than later and then put it back on, kind of like we did with curb cuts.
The only thing that I'm, I, I, I would ask about is how soon, I mean, we're getting into January, how soon are you gonna start, Director Thompson? How soon are you looking at what streets you're gonna be striping next season and, and all of that type of stuff?
Well, next season what we'll be striping is the roads we just did.
Okay.
And then there'll be another round of, they were developing now, the chip fund road, we're gonna resurface.
Okay.
And then they would get striped, hopefully we get both ranchers and them to come here.
Okay.
And we, we rely on what we just pretty much resurfaced, so.
Okay, so you start with those and then you go?
We can add, certainly add another one.
Right.
It's completely up to the county, they come and do it within the area, we have no idea when they're gonna do it until short notice and we have no control over it.
All right. So something we can trust.
Quick wave. Well, that's what I was asking, but didn't, don't you also strike the bike boulevard stuff in-house?
We did some of that in-house.
That's why I was, cause I know, well, hearing straight, that was done in-house, right?
That one was done in-house, I mean, we have that ability to do.
And how, I mean, from a, uh, planning and budgetary standpoint, how far of a lead time do you need on that? Not much, okay. So I mean, yeah, I mean, it would not make a difference, um, doesn't make a difference to me, one way or the other.
Exactly, I'm fine right now, anyway, so we could do that process and then just put it all together.
So we're postponing this for a week then?
Uh, we're gonna postpone it for, I guess, we're gonna see about getting that formal process of what comes being designated as a bike boulevard.
So we're postponing to the next committee of the whole?
No, I mean, cause it's gonna have to be, it's gonna, it's gonna take, uh, what I'll do, cause it will probably kill, uh, uh, for this year anyways, so just I'll reintroduce it in the new year.
Anything that's not settled by.
Right.
The end of next Tuesday just dies at the end of the year.
So, um, what I'll do is I'll make a motion to postpone this indefinitely and then reintroduce it once the policy's created, cause it will be dead after September the first.
But we could always get response next week, is what we're saying.
I, is it?
Unless I'm misunderstanding.
On the process, or like, I don't know, like, what, I, that would be up to, I, I would.
Cause all we're doing is asking about what is involved with it, that's just a quick check.
I guess that would be how fast Director Thompson and company could create a policy that says if something's designated as a bike boulevard, it receives this.
Oh, create a policy, oh, okay, gotcha. Nevermind, I must have forgotten that, that part.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, JR's taken this up further, saying about can we create a formalized process or?
Right, yeah, I didn't hear that part, good.
And I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
I think that's what I.
Robert, is there something that could be done?
Sure.
By next Tuesday?
Probably Monday.
Okay.
Very special reading, I have to.
Well, you wasted all that time down here earlier, like.
Yeah, I, um, so does that sound like a, I, does that sound like a, um, forward?
Okay.
Yeah.
So then you're, so you have a motion on the table?
Yeah, I, I made a motion to postpone.
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
I have always motion carried, uh, make a motion to adjourn, committee of the whole, period, second, second by Alderman Pannas, all in favor, I, always motion carried. All right, I'll call the committee, the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, but, uh, well, the clerk, please call the attendance report.
Alderman Benyon?
Here.
Alderman Pannas?
Here.
Alderman Fornin?
Here.
Alderman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia? And President Crawford?
Here, please rise with the implication for the flag.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
One, fifty, this is the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on the edge of God, in the full glory of Jesus Christ.
Reading directed, approval of minutes, previous regular meeting.
Regular meeting of the Oleane Common Council was held on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three at six ten PM. Present were Alderman Crawford, Benyon, Pannas, Fornin, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia. None wrapped.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting, could I get a second please? Second by Alderman Benyon, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Committee reports and unfinished council business?
None.
Communications from the mayor?
Thank you, uh, I have, uh, sent you all, uh, selections for the civilian review board, and I ask that you affirm them tonight, uh, at regular, during surgery.
All right, anything else, Mr. Mayor?
That's all, thank you.
Insolent communications?
None.
City official reports?
Monthly report of the city auditor, month ended November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Financial summer report as of November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, proposed legislation and referrals?
PL number ninety-three dash twenty-three by Mayor Nellio, referred to the regular meeting Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three for resolution by council president. PL number ninety-four dash twenty-three by President Crawford, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three by council president.
All right, so that previous PL has been postponed, uh, definitely, um, until we revisit the policy. Um, so before I open it up for public comment, I'd like to give an opportunity to the older people to make a statement at this time. Alderman McCall.
John, do you want us to wait to talk about the civilian review board until that comes up, or?
I would ask that, until the, uh, resolution, yes, please. Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, well, clerk, please read the public comment statement.
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department ads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right, at this time, I'll invite in members of the public to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, you'll have five minutes. Anyone, anyone at all, anyone? Seeing none, I'll call all the common closed, on the financing bills?
None.
Resolutions?
Resolution number ninety-three dash twenty-three, PL number ninety-three dash twenty-three, to authorize a transfer of twenty-seven thousand four hundred forty dollars for a sewer fund contingency to line item eight-one-two-oh dot four-one-two for costs associated with the South Oleane Sewer Collapse Pump Rental.
Okay, this was discussed previously in committee. Uh, are there any comments or questions? Oh, Mr. Mayor.
There's a mistake here.
Okay.
It's the North Oleane, not South Oleane. Sewer collapse.
Okay. So I will make a motion to suspend the rules, could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Benyon, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Make a motion to amend resolution ninety-three dash twenty-three, PL ninety-three dash twenty-three, to, uh, read North Oleane Sewer rather than this, this South Oleane Sewer. Could I get, uh, I'll make that motion, could I get a second?
My second.
Second by Alderman McCall, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, anything further, Mr. Mayor?
No.
All right, uh, Alderman McCall.
So we, we've had this conversation about, you know, we're continuing to pay for, um, the pump, we know what the cost is, we could've already owned it had we, you know, kind of paid for it upfront. So the question is, how long do we continue to pay the monthly fee versus we're gonna have to purchase it at some point anyways?
Alderman.
Last time we discussed it, it was asked, uh, I think we had Brad was gonna check with Jack to see if there was language in the rental contract about, he had stated that money paid in rent could not go towards the purchase price, and he, Jack was gonna look to see if that was the case.
Do we have any follow-up on that, Mr. Mayor?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was declaring, I have other questions, I just don't recall them specifically.
So the question that we had asked from the council was, uh, money that we've used or paid to rent the pump over there currently, in the contract, does it state whether some of that money or that money could be used towards the purchase price if we decided to purchase it?
Because Brad had said in previous contracts that that was some of the language.
In some contracts that was.
Right.
June, when they first asked, it was not, it was stated that it couldn't, and then I think affirmed in November, but Brad said they wanted to check with Jack or Bill, somebody mentioned checking with Jack.
Well, I'll speak with the mayor and with Brad, make sure that I understand it completely, and then I'll give an answer that's correct. I don't.
In my view, it's usually rental places are always wanting to make some kind of deal if you wanna buy it after extended rental, give you some kind of deal anyway.
Because I'm of the mind, we don't wanna continue to pay when, we could've already owned it, is my sense on things, and so we don't wanna go another month and another month without knowing, and if we're not going to get any, um, kind of break on it, then we need to make a decision about buying it, is my understanding.
The bike assembly board is not gonna hurt nothing in terms of moving on that, if he comes back, if we can find that answer soon, then we can just move on to buying it.
Wait, I mean, if you don't buy us to go another month.
Yeah, save forward.
Yeah, yeah, cause I, yeah, I'm in agreement that we have to move on this as it is.
Okay, so if we move this money, Mr. Mayor, can, can we look into that, whether or not we can, we could just use that money? Uh, if they cut us a deal to be able to buy this out, or if there's language in the contract, just to verify before we just continue renting it?
Yes, we could do that.
All right, very good. Other questions? All right, I'll entertain a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
Sponsor is motion made by Alderman McCall, and second by Alderman Benyon. Well, clerk, please call the wall.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderman Fornin?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Okay.
Uh, resolution ninety-four dash twenty-three, PL ninety-four dash twenty-three has been postponed. Resolution number ninety-five dash twenty-three, no PL. Resolution confirming the barrel appointment of members of the civilian review board.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, you have before you, uh, actually I provided it to you, uh, several days ago, or a couple of weeks ago, I guess, for review. Uh, and, uh, it's there. Uh, there was a very limited number of people who did apply. Uh, we had ten apply, uh, one person of color applied, and then backed out, uh, pulled his application. And, uh, so you have before you, uh, the seven members that were selected to be on, on this committee.
Uh, any comments or questions? Alderman McCall.
So first, I, I wanna say I'm glad to see movement on, um, the CRB, we had waited about a year for it and, and people had been asking, so I have no issue with anyone on this list. They are all great citizens of Oleane, they contribute to Oleane. So my concern is not about any person on this group. Um, one of the primary goals of the CRB is to give a voice to community members. And by demonstrating that community members are being treated fairly and equitably and guiding agencies in their effort to be sensitive to the community's culture and diversity. This has nothing to do with, I think our police do a great job. I think that this list is not representative of the diversity of our community, and our community deserves a diverse CRB. Um, the groups that are nominated are homogeneous group, all are white, middle-class, upper-middle-class income, and with one exception, over fifty. I get that it is a difficult challenge to engage people and, and I will be the first to say I could have, um, reached out more than I did to the, to the couple of people that I, I did. And so that part is, is on me. And while I do not want to delay the process, I'm gonna urge everybody to reconsider this list. Um, and I know the. Um, and I know the response is, well, nobody, you know, nobody applied, um, it isn't, uh, it is a challenge to, um, reach out and, and ask people that don't fit into, the groups are already always, um, on our committees, on our planning boards, but I think that if we want to have a CRB that is representative of our entire community and that will be perceived as its decision if we go forward to not give a voice to the majority of our community, so I want to say, and I want to be very clear, this has nothing to do with these individuals who are on this group, but we're, you know, we're talking about, um, giving a voice to individuals that at times don't feel like they have a voice, and that, that is that this is simply not representative, and I will take ownership of, you know, that I, um, did not do as much work as I could have to encourage more than the couple of people I did to apply, but to go forward with this group, I think really tells the majority of, uh, our residents that, um, they don't have a voice.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Robinson?
I think it was obvious, I was going to say something. Uh, I, I agree with a lot of, uh, what Alderwoman McCall said, uh, about the list, I do know three people in here personally, and I know that, uh, I have confidence that these people will be able to do, uh, what they're being tasked to do, and, and if, uh, they are affirmed tonight, then, uh, I, I wish them luck. Uh, this has been a long time coming, this is something that I most definitely don't want to hold up, uh, uh, again, this is for the benefit of the community and for the police department, I truly believe that, uh, and I do know, you know, this, when I think about the diversity of the city, uh, you know, we fought and fought over the language that we put into, uh, that legislation, and, uh, you know, when I think about that and I think about the demographics of the city, uh, in all honesty, I knew what we would get, right? So, uh, can I complain? I mean, you can always complain, but it's, it's the facts, uh, when you go out to the community and try to get people involved, a lot of people will say they will help and then push comes to shove, no one wants to help, so this is what we have, uh, so if this is what we have, these are the people that volunteered, then why not? Uh, I'm going to go with that, uh, put my faith in them and hope that, uh, our constituents put their faith in the, in these individuals and then go from there, uh, and, and I can say, there's, there's something I plan on talking to council about in the future, but, you know, there's, there's people here with family members that, that, uh, are African-American, so they are vested.
Maybe.
And, and I, and I feel like, uh, they would be doing a disservice to their own family members if they did not, uh, represent their community well, so I'll just word it that way and leave it at that, but I, I think we're, uh, we're good to move forward.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll undertake a sponsor?
I'll sponsor you.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. With clerk, please call the whole.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
No.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, five a's, one n, one absence.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn for the, for the second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Pannas, all in favor, aye, opposed.